Welcome back everyone. Part two is public involvement and I can submit to you these public addresses and questions. We have the first question from Mr Nigel Gibson to councillor Price. Sorry, from his first address from Mr Nigel Gibson, I do apologise.
Is that all this is?
Yes, so it is.
Thank you Lord Mayor. My name is Nigel Gibson, I've been observing the way the Oxford City Council operates since 2009, when I became involved in the campaign to save Temple Calle Pools, the health and fitness centre that you eventually closed in December 2014.
Shane.
Since then, you've failed to track what the previous users have been doing to maintain their health and fitness. And it's a prime example of the topic of this address, what passes for openness and transparency in Oxford City Council, or in my experience, the lack of openness and transparency. We forecast what the closure of Temple Calle Pools would mean for the thousands of users: exercising less frequently or not at all, increased costs and time to go to another facility, a loss of fitness and health compromised, as well as an increase in the crime rate in the area. All of these predictions have come true, and you have failed in your promise to monitor these people, instead preferring a good news approach and ignoring the consequences that your actions have had on real people. And the legacy of this Labour administration, as we come up to yet another set of elections, is simply that you have actively and knowingly removed health and fitness facilities from 40,000 people, a quarter of Oxford's population. And there's been a lack of transparency and openness over the whole Temple Calle Pools affair since 2009. Some say it would have been closed in secrecy. Some examples include consultation. Yes, you did consult, but not in any meaningful way. The public engaging consultations believing they could make a difference. You have refused a freedom of information request to identify when any consultation on any topic over the last three years has made a real difference to your plans. And it's not surprising that you refuse. Public consultation is something you see as having to do, not something you enter into willingly. Another example is outsourcing leisure services to Fusion. You've engaged in a buddy relationship with Fusion that conveniently avoids tax through its charitable status, keeps the very same people employed that delivered your failed service in the first place. And now, under yet more secrecy and zero scrutiny, you nod through their requests to increase admission prices of the public. No oversight, no accountability. I spent over a year attempting to have the contract with Fusion release to public scrutiny, but you refused this FOI request. And the demolition of Temple Calle Pools. As the intent to demolish the site became clear, you have consistently and forcibly maintained that it has nothing to do with you. Yet more lack of transparency. The veil has been pulled back, but only using FOI. And there we see that it was indeed Oxford City Council, not Catalyst, that decided that demolition should happen before any planning application for redevelopment was approved. Now, the freedom of information process is something that you've spoken about at media, where you have very openly supported a reduction in the power of the FOI act. This is not surprising when you consider how much you do not reveal openly and transparently, forcing the public to do the only thing they can to get information, which is to try and use FOI. The answer really in the end is simple: don't do the wrong thing in the first place. Act openly, act transparently, take responsibility and be accountable. Again, putting it as simply as I can. You are here as a district council with one sole objective: to provide services to the public that we want and need where we want and need them. You have failed in this time and time again over the last seven years, and you have shown no sign of changing this attitude. Consultation, mere dip service to your policy. Decide what you want to do, show the public what's going to happen, and employ experts who will give you the answer you want to justify to yourselves that it is the right thing to do. Temple Calle Pools, Barnes Road Community Centre, Barton Park Link Road through Northway, East Oxford Community Centre, Northern Gateway, even the threat to the unique ecology of the Lyme Valley site of special scientific interest. That's under threat. Rosehill Community Centre, now even Barton Community Centre. They've all followed a similar process. Let the public have their say, make as little information about your real intent to develop them as possible, then ignore them. When you stand in front of the Oxford public on their doorstep in the coming weeks, remember the lack of transparency and openness you have shown over all these issues and many more. Even the housing register, where you conveniently inflated the figures to justify your strategy. Remember all the people that you're ignoring, save in the knowledge that so few people vote nowadays, it doesn't actually matter anymore. Democracy, like openness and transparency, is truly dead in Oxford and will remain so while Oxford City Council continues to ignore the real needs of the public. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, it will take me very long time to respond to all these complaints and requests and requests and presentations which were in Nigel's address, but I just want to make three simple points in response. Firstly, as far as transparency is concerned, usage data and all the information about the leisure facilities is published, as is of course all information about planning applications and other of the schemes as you mentioned in this particular paragraph. Secondly, consultations embedded in our processes, and the results of that consultation is published and is taken into account in the CEV reports subsequently go forward, and therefore is taken into account in whatever way is felt to be appropriate. It's not necessarily followed through by accepting everything that people say with abuse as a form of information. And thirdly, in terms of the issues about democracy, voting in Oxford in local elections is slightly better than the national average. Admit that in terms of the European comparisons, they're not correct, but there's nothing particularly true to say that people don't vote. They do vote with secrecy, as I said, and that does reflect in the results we've had over the last decade in terms of supporting the party that I represent.
Eight per cent voting, you think that's enough? What you call consultation is not the definition that the public know.
We now have an address from Dr Stefan Fischmann.
Stefan Fischmann, thank you very much for letting me talk today. I'm actually calling in Power and Power, who are written four years ago with a clear knowledge that there are pending major works.
Could you be nearer to the microphone, we can't hear you. Thank you.
I moved into Power and Power four years ago with clear knowledge that there are pending major works. And this is the amount of money I was quoted then, four years ago. Nine thousand five hundred pounds to do all the works required. In the meantime, Oxford City Council has increased the budget, the total budget, to twenty million pounds, under clear statements that there is gradual improvement and under the title of building better world-class city for everyone. Since improvements and building cities are not requirements of leaseholders, I did not worry at all until I have got a beer which asked me to pay nearly all of that. And only then I realised that until the contract for twenty million pounds was signed, Oxford City officers have avoided pretty much any scrutiny from leaseholders, who are prudent homeowners and who are positioned to judge what's said and what was not. So let's talk about a few economic aspects of the problem. Spending sixty thousand pounds for my property means sixty-five per cent of its value, above my flat of ninety-two thousand pounds. Which one of you having your own own spent two-thirds of its value on painting the walls externally and changing it? Two-thirds of its value. Moreover, if you spend that much, any prudent homeowner would ask a local estate agent how much I'm going to gain on the price value of, say, buying off my flat. Oxford City Council did not do that. Leaseholders have good estimates from local estate agents who say it may be ten thousand pounds. Eighty per cent loss on such investment. Who would do that to their own own? Let's talk about few specific of our projects. Let's talk about few specific measures. On energy safety measures such as windows and external plumbing, I estimate for very unusual given, that about thirty thousand pounds is going to be requested from us. From energetic performance certificate, EPC official certificate, I read that improvements are going to bring about hundred pounds savings a year. And therefore, the time to attempt to profit on such investment is three hundred years. Three full centuries to get the first money back on energy improvement measures from the Tower Block refurbishment. We have asked Oxford City Council officers to explain if there are any better estimates, we didn't get any response. I'm leaving my flat and I know that I have no problem with my windows or my windows are good working standard double-faced windows made of PDC. And given that I have been asked to pay eighteen thousand pounds on replacing those windows, I went through the block and actually I have taken photographs and I looked on all the doors. I can leave this one, it could be on the website. I haven't spotted a single window frame broken. I haven't spotted a single window pane broken. A handful of windows lost those properties, which I recognise as a problem I had with one of my windows in my kitchen and not bringing a finish-up tool in the project. That thing solved the problem for a price of nearly twenty pounds. That much out of cost. Solved the problem for past four years, I have no problem with that. And instead of that, I'm being asked to replace each and every window in the whole block, on average, per window at three thousand pounds. Which one would you do as homeowner? Well, these are just few examples from a lease of observations, about thirty pages of them, leaseholders have sent to City Council officers. We have not got any response. And really, all I'm asking for the council to ask your officers to account fully and truly for all the economy and sensibility of taken measures and the number of celebrations that have been sent away from the event. Thank you very much.
Thank you Lord Mayor, thank you Dr Pirtnik for your address. It's disappointing to hear a tackle from the public gallery. The forecast of the Tower Block project has been met from the housing revenue account, it comes from ten threats. Leaseholders will be recharged their own contribution unless those works which are already being carried out to council flats and those works which are considered to be part and tworks in law in excess of the council's obligations. Overall, the project cost as identified to leaseholders is nineteen million six hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-two pounds, though calculations are done separately for each block. Fifty-one leaseholders representing fourteen point seven per cent of the properties and therefore fourteen point seven per cent of eligible costs, which is less than fourteen point seven per cent of whole cost, is being recharged to leaseholders. That's not the end of the story though. We have ourselves referred the charges to the independent tribunals to which leaseholders have the right to make representations and I understand are making substantial representations and we will abide by the decision of the tribunal. Of the general principle, it would not be fair either to charge council tenants more than their fair share or to refrain from undertaking work which is absolutely necessary will add at least thirty years to the life of the flat. Judging by current property prices in Oxford, over those years, the cost of work for each flat will be more than halved by the efforts.
Three thousand or twenty, I know which I'd pay.
We now have an address from Mr Artgrove.
My point of addressing you today is that, at the end of it, the people of Barton Sandhill would have a better policy to live under, which would then be happy. As you all know, three point seven million pounds has been awarded to be spent on Barton Sandhills and most of that money will go on the Underhill Circus, the neighbourhood centre, and what I read, a few... and a few other things. This is at a time when the youth of Barton, that number councillors, over eight hundred currently have, not a place to party, have a Christmas, a wedding ceremony. There is no public facility currently on Barton to celebrate life's milestones. The neighbourhood centre, I was at the APA in October, I specifically asked them, when was the last time the youth had a party in this building? The reply I got from the secretary was two years ago. And I understand that the BCA, the neighbourhood centre, doesn't welcome parties. As you all should know, the Royal British Legion has closed down and sadly, St Mary's Church Hall is in urgent need of modernisation, which the church is trying to do. I wrote to councillors, councillor Valley, councillor Van Coulter, I wrote to councillor Price, I wrote to CEO, Mr Sloane here, and do you know, I didn't get a single response. I know that response, is this something that just affects the Labour Party? This affects that all of the councillors, you write to them, you don't get a response. I wish it wasn't so, but it is, it seems to be a cross-party thing. Now, I also wrote to the Royal British Legion, who owns the British Legion that's closed. I wrote to their head office. They informed me that the British Legion is actually owned by the council. So my question to you is now, and this really has to support the people of Barton, the three point seven million pounds that the people of Barton are generally speaking outraged at, I believe they are. Some of that money, councillors ought to be used to give the eight hundred youth of Barton a place to party. They would love a place to party, that is what they are asking for, that is what that should be done. And that is why I'm asking you here today to redirect some of that fund. Give the people of Barton Sandhills a policy that would make them happy, instead of spending it on shops. And as a woman said to me today, did they do that two years ago? Please listen, give the people of Barton Sandhills a place to party. Thank you very much.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I find it astonishing that the accusation is being made that we don't rely. Because I've written to the address specified by the platform only to have the letter coming back to me saying, you left this address? I would also add that there is a place for party and in speaking to the secretary of the community association and putting it to her that parties have been prohibited. She has replied, that is not right. That parties are welcome at Barton neighbourhood centre. So fundamentally, I find that representations may find out well inherently important.
Thank you Lord Mayor. And I would also add that the existing pavilion and the new group pavilion when it is built have had great success in hosting parties, birthdays, weddings, wakes and other community events. To nine members of the council who may not be fully aware of what's being discussed here, the St Mary's Church Hall is a building for community use in Barton which is owned by the church. Since it's shut, we have been doing our best to try to find a way that a community facility can be provided there in Edgcombe Road next to the church. The one thing that we cannot do as councillors, trustees, public funds, is simply to gift the money to the church in England to refurbish or rebuild a facility which would be owned and operated by them. However, we are very willing to enter into partnerships with the appropriate organisations and think the prospects are looking significantly more positive now in last month or so than they have since the church hall closed. The St Mary's parish in Barton has a new partnership with St Aldert's Parish in city centre, which has considerably more resources than St Mary's has in that part of the partnership. Also, the diocese of Oxford as a whole has in its detailed profile of the Barton parish drawn specific attention to the need for community facilities attached to the church. I've therefore written to the new vicar, the Reverend Boswood, and also drawn the attention of the St Aldert's Parish trustees to the situation of the church hall and the problems that there are around providing community facility there. And the council, I am sure, will continue to work with all the potential partners and I in particular look forward to working with St Aldert's and the diocese and trying to find a situation which will enable a community facility to reopen in Edgcombe Road, serving not only the church but also the wider community.
We now have a question from Mr Kess. Mr Stefan, Mr Nigel Gibson.
In autumn last year, Catalyst Housing announced their intention to demolish the Temple Calle Pools building. Supporters of the campaign to save Temple Calle Pools asked Oxford City Council to intervene and ensure that demolition did not take place until after Catalyst had submitted and had approved planning permission for the development of the site. This is because it makes no sense to demolish this structurally sound building when a community group is ready, willing and able to take ownership and operate it as a going concern, at no cost to the council if planning permission was not granted for its replacement. The council made it clear in responding to those concerns of citizens that any demolition would be Catalyst's decision alone and had nothing to do with the council itself. This message was relayed by Mr Smith, our local MP, who passed on the same message to the public. This position has been maintained by the council numerous times. However, in an email from a council officer to Catalyst, dated the 3rd of July 2015, 7:49am, it says, "The council have decided that they want to demolish the pool." This information only became public in a response to a freedom of information request. Why have you, the Oxford City Council, in your emails responding to concerns over demolition, misinformed both the public and our local MP? And what are you going to do in the interests of open and transparent government to correct this position?
Lord Mayor, I wasn't aware of the particular email that Nigel refers to in his question until this question was asked. But the information I provided with my email was substantially true, long as leaving. Because the site is owned by Catalyst and it's for the owners to decide when they want to clear it. The council have to approve the method statement and ensure that all appropriate information and regulations have been met. And that process is attractive because of inaccuracies in the original material submitted by the Catalyst agents, which was received by the council. Council officers in July, I understand, were concerned about the health and safety implications of this type of building being left empty and that's the basis for the email which Nigel received. But it hasn't been acted upon as we can see and hence there's no obligation on Catalysts to do as those officers requested at that time.
Why didn't you give the opposite indication to anyone asking you?
Why did you lie to the public?
I made clear I was not aware of this email until it was revealed in this particular question.
Thank you Mr Gibson.
It's your email.
We now have a question from Cassie Perry.
My name is Cassie Perry. I am a residential voter who has been based in and around Oxford for the last two years and resident in the city for more than a decade. I am here as part of the official PSPO campaign, which currently has about a hundred and sixty members. I am a key worker and child and adolescent secretary of best working with young survivors of sexual abuse and sexual exploitation here in Oxford. I am also currently a part-time master's student at Oxford University. I am here because I am very concerned about the potential impact of the proposed waterways PSPO. Excuse my shaking voice, I'm a bit nervous. Over the last few years, life as a residential voter has become increasingly difficult in Oxford. Constant reductions in services have made life physically very demanding, particularly in the winter months. An increasingly discriminatory language is used in the press, sometimes by local elected councillors, as if you're harassment on the top path. During a recent five-day stay within the city, I was verbally abused by three separate local homeowners, each of them mentioning the proposed PSPO as justification for their aggression. I was dismayed to see that these repeat complainers make up the bulk of the evidence that has been used in the suggestion of a PSPO in the first place and I use the term evidence very lightly here. For me, the PSPO has been the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back and it has driven me out of Oxford, a city I deeply love and where my friends and support and networks are. Seeing local councillors proposing to legitimise the harassment we receive into law was horrifying. And for me, as a single woman living alone, was also deeply frightening. I decided this financial year not to renew my mowing here and have purchased a mowing in Boundbury instead. This is depriving Oxford of yet another needed key worker. So my question, which unfortunately hasn't really been answered in the written response I received, is this: In considering a waterways PSPO, how do Oxford City Council intend to protect voters from individual homeowners making multiple malicious complaints when they clearly are giving these homeowners a stronger voice in this debate? And it was these complainers that made up all of the evidence in the PSPO proposal.
Thank you very much for coming on today. I do appreciate the wonderful people back there. Thank you very much for coming along as well. I had a few here earlier when we were talking about a housing company for Oxford. And we also talked about being letting UNE as the freedom of the city of their work on homes in the city. This council is absolutely committed to ensuring that people are properly and adequately housed. And wouldn't it be wonderful that this, the housing company, might come up with some ideas for the alternative residential accommodation that the river can provide and unblocking to provide more residential presence. I am particularly concerned that you have been harassed and have had verbal abuse. That is totally unacceptable. And I would urge you, I don't know whether you did report it at the time, but it's very important that this sort of behaviour is reported and that it is in the area where police and city council officers can actually address those issues. police and city council officers can actually address those issues. What I find worrying is that it's only at this stage that these incidents are actually coming to light. These should have been brought to light a long time ago, and I'm sorry that that hasn't happened. There is no strong voice in this debate, believe me. We want to listen to all of you, particularly the people that live on the river, because you have a unique experience and expertise on how we move forward. And I'll be interested in hearing what you have to say. I think that's all I want to say at this stage, but please, I'm sorry that you felt it necessary that you had to leave Oxford. Hopefully, if we can provide some more residential moorings, you'll be able to come back if you don't have a PSPO.
Now, a question from Sam Dent.
Good evening. My name is Sam Dent. I'm a lifelong voter who does five years old, and I'm a chartered accountant. I've been living on boats since 1990 across the waterways of the country, both with and without moorings. Apparently, I'm fortunate to have one of the very few residential moorings in Oxford, in Hinksy Park Ward, this place. What I have found almost unique to Oxford since I moved here in 2012 is the extreme tension between voters and other communities in the city. My colleague Cassie's just referred to it. Given the inflammatory and prejudicial language used about voters by both elected council members and council staff, some of which has been referred to during council's questions, this is unsurprisingly deeply saddening. I have suffered and seen my friends and neighbours suffer, direct and indirect discrimination. One of the multiple contributors to the so-called evidence backing up this proposal recently referred to voters in my hearing as living on the fringes of society. Can I remind you, chartered accountant? Another individual named in the scrutiny committee documentation has boasted of making more than 60 complaints about voters in a single season. I am part of the PSPO No campaign, as I believe both that PSPOs are poor legislation, and specifically that this proposed PSPO breaches Oxford City Council's statutory duty of care, the Equalities Act of 2010, and Articles 8 and 14 of the European Convention of Human Rights. Given my privileged mooring position, the proposed PSPO is much less likely to impact on me than many of my friends. But I don't want to vote because I love boats and I love voters. I feel that the proposed PSPO is believed by some sections of the council to be required due to a fundamental misunderstanding of both the needs and the makeup of the voting community. Councils and their elected officials have a duty to protect the interests of all groups within the community, whether we be settled, unsettled, or travellers. In passing a PSPO, Oxford City Council would be acting in direct opposition, this PSPO, I specify, would be acting in direct opposition to a minority group's interests and wellbeing. In this context, and noting the response that was published on the website, I would like to ask if the council is aware that the Department of Communities and Local Government ruled in April 2009 that barging travellers are covered by the Housing Act 2004, section 225? If the council has received a copy of the March 2016 draft guidance to local housing authorities on the periodic review of housing needs from that department, which makes specific reference to those with preference for houseboat living? And what is the council doing to assess, look after and protect the interests of us as a recognised minority group?
Thank you very much for talking along and making a very good comment on behalf of the boat users. What I'm saying now very clearly, and I said before, is that your boat is your home, and we understand that, we absolutely understand that. And with that comes all the rights that you have, and we completely accept that. Again, I am concerned that you are referring to behaviours that are totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable. And I wonder why or if you have actually reported these to the authorities, because it is important that every incident is reported so there is a matter for record. If they're not reported, then we can't do anything about it. So please, please report. There will be, yeah, there will be opportunities for all the boat lovers to speak to our officers and hopefully myself as well, even if that's what the Public Development Board...
Which is already matter we weren't invited to.
That was a council meeting which was chaired by Tim Sadler. That is not a public meeting, but I can assure you, as we move forward, you are going to be involved in the consultation. You are particularly important in this process. And we have not yet made a decision to move forward to a PSPO. We are moving forward on consulting. So what comes out of that consultation will inform our decision.
Okay, that's not an answer to my specific question.
I understand that there are concerns about the legislation. However, we have a conservative government, they have repressed legislation that the Labour Government put in place around antisocial behaviour. So we are where we are, we have to actually deal with the sorts of legislation that we have in place today. That's not to say that we are using it on each and every occasion. This is about preventing antisocial behaviour and behaviours that are detrimental to the environment and people that are using a particular area. Sorry, can you remind me of the question that you...
What specific actions are you taking to protect us as a minority community as recognised in law?
As I say, in terms of the behaviours that you described, we need to know about them, otherwise if we don't know about them, we can't actually do anything about them. Are you talking about the behaviours that you've had? I think, I think probably we're running out of time here, so I think what we'll do is we'll, one of the groups, I'm absolutely sure, will be the boat lovers, and we will be speaking to you as a specific group. Okay.
We have a question from Alix Greenwood.
I'd like to thank councillor Sinclair for welcoming voter engagement in the discussion of the waterways PSPO. And in the spirit of this, I hope she'll engage my question in a somewhat more genuine way than that which she has in her written response. It would of course be illogical and unhelpful and confusing to include in a consultation on antisocial behaviour those activities which actually fall outside the definition of antisocial behaviour. For example, if there are, if there was to be a consultation on apples, it would clearly not be very helpful to include questions of oranges in that consultation. With this in mind, the Antisocial Behaviour Crime and Leasing Act 2014 gives councils the statutory power to make PSPO, the activities being banned, are persistent, will have a detrimental effect on quality of life. And moreover, according to the Crime and Disorder Act 1998, antisocial behaviour is defined as acts causing harassment, alarm or distress. And having read the PSPO supporting evidence document, I was left wondering on what grounds councillor Sinclair was able to conclude that many of the activities documented genuinely constitute harassment, alarm or distress. In particular, I'm referring to activities such as mooring without consent and smoke and noise from engines, generators or stoves. I also wonder how councillor Sinclair was able to conclude that these activities are having a significant and persistent detrimental effect on quality of life. I would therefore like for councillor Sinclair to clarify under what circumstances mooring without consent or hope eating one's home with a stove causes harassment, alarm or distress to others and has a persistent substantive detrimental effect on the quality of life of others. Under what circumstances is it helpful to include as part of a consultation to consult on activities regarding antisocial behaviour, activities which clearly fall outside of the statutory definition of antisocial behaviour?
Can I just confirm, I haven't made any conclusions and we haven't actually got any comfortable opinions yet, so we are wanting to hear all sides, including the evidence that you want to provide from all the interested parties. We've got another question, sorry.
At what degree is it helpful to include activities which aren't antisocial behaviour in a consultation on antisocial behaviour, which is what PSPOs are for?
Well, the legislation is also about causing distress and behaviour that could be detrimental to a particular environment. And I think, I'm not sure on your boat, well, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure that you will be aware that there are certain behaviours that could be detrimental to your way of life as well. So I think what we need to do, what I've said is that you need to engage, and I'm really pleased that the boat lovers have come forward, because I thought that that actually might be something that we would have difficulty in, like you brought me into the debate, so I'm pleased that you are fully engaged. But once we set out to discuss issues with you, then value the time to have a sit down and open dialogue.
Just for the minutes, you do think that eating your home constitutes antisocial behaviour or is a distress?
I have not made that at all, I haven't said that at all in the last two or three this week. I have said that your boat is your home, you have rights attached to your home, and we value that and we respect you.
A question from John. But well, our political council, that we could suspend standing orders to hear the rest of the questions, if that's...
Let him speak!
Of course, have you suspended standing orders so I can hear the rest of the question?
Lord Mayor, on this point of procedure, it would help, wouldn't it, if the rest of the members of the public asked a question to which they're a house, and then were not speeches on both sides?
So do I propose that we suspend standing orders? Second?
Before I ask my question, I'd like to observe that I've already seen the response from councillor Sinclair, and deeply upset by their disregard for my concerns. I have already communicated through my immense dissatisfaction with her response. I have abbreviated my question, you'll be glad to hear. I'd like to further pass my concerns regarding the PSPO so-called supporting evidence document, since I have recently been subjected to alienation within the waterways community, which I believe is due to the inclusion of so-called evidence taken from social media, which I have not been asked for my permission to use, which clearly identifies myself as the contributor. There are at least four photographs taken by myself in the PSPO supporting evidence document. And due to the recent lack of cooperation from the responsible councillor and council officers, I've had to resort to submitting a data protection request to establish what data the council holds from my social media accounts, which are being claimed as evidence for the PSPO. My question is, will councillors work with me to establish by what methods the PSPO's so-called supporting evidence document has been produced? From what sources the alleged evidence has been gathered? And by what means the council believes that it has permission to reuse data that it has collated? And specifically, will the council remove from this document all the evidence that is not relevant or that they do not have permission to use?
Thank you, Mr Robby. I think my response to you this afternoon, a late response, and I do apologise, we have had, I think, issues, and I think your email originally now is one that I actually missed in responding to you. Yes, we will be wanting to...
This issue was very interesting, please don't...
We will, we will be working with the voting community. I have said that on three occasions now. And I can surely appreciate the attraction of living on the river. A good friend of mine actually was a voter, and it was a very positive experience, and I enjoyed visiting her, so I can understand that. Yes, I have asked the, sorry, so yes, I have asked our legal officers to investigate that. Anything that's detrimental to you personally will be removed if that is possible, okay?
Thank you, Snobby. Question from Jo Hampton.
Thank you very much. So another question for councillor Sinclair. My name is Jo Hampton, I've lived on boats in and around Oxford for over seven years, and I'm deeply concerned about the implications of the proposed Oxford Waterways Public Service Protection Order. As I consider it really narrows down the options for collaborative solutions which could utilise the experience and expertise of many waterways residents and can provide genuinely workable solutions to some of the problems expressed, and I'm also speaking in part to the PSPO group. I note that Oxford's conspicuous as being a real lead local authority in the UK opposing to the PSPO enforcement on the waterways, and this is really surprising given its strong record in community council collaborations in other areas such as low-carbon Oxford. There are many examples of how multiple interest groups have worked together to produce workable and positive solutions to issues around waterways issues around the UK. Through first-hand experience of supporting and helping to develop community low-carbon groups across Oxford and Oxfordshire, I know the power of collaborative community action, communities working in partnership with other statutory bodies such as the city and county council. Such collaborations open up rather than close down the reins for possible solutions and open up constructive dialogue. Instead of consulting just on a PSPO, which is divisive and I consider not a good use for public funds, this is an opportunity for creative thinking ahead of a PSPO, ahead of consultations, that capitalises on the rich experience and the social capital of people living on boats and around the waterways as well. The council could, for example, establish a subcommittee or working group along the lines of its already established area forums, with full participation of all waterways users and residents. So my question is, and to councillor Sinclair, do you agree that the proposed consultation regarding the waterways PSPO should be expanded to include a range of alternative options for the waterways of Oxford, rather than just a yes or no outcome regarding the PSPO?
Thank you for your question and very detailed or preliminary the forebat. The consultation hasn't started yet, and we haven't made any decisions. We seem to be jumping ahead. What we're at the moment is looking to consult, and what we're doing in the council is, who should we be consulting to make sure that it's thorough and clear process? Hopefully, out of that will come lots of ideas as to how we can move forward positively. So I welcome all of the clubs. Actually, I think it has opened up the debate already, because there's certainly information that I'm getting about antisocial behaviour from other parties that have been described this evening, which I wasn't aware of. So we're getting a good cross-section of opinions here, so I think it has opened up. Certainly, we will be working with you to move forward in whatever way is appropriate as in Oxford Downfield.
Question from Helen Marsh. Question from Penny Shane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My name is Penny Shane, my partner and I have lived in...
My partner and I have lived in Oxford since 2002, on a narrowboat since 2011. Despite sounding American, I am a UK citizen and have worked at the university's Poddley and Low library since 2005. The fact that we are fortunate enough to secure residential mooring on private property in Oxford and would not be immediately affected by the proposed PSPO at home has done nothing to allay my extreme disquiet at the possibility of so-called Waterways PSPO going into effect here and in other cities across the UK. The track record of PSPOs in their short and chequered history is not good. Because the Home Office does not collect data on PSPOs, it is only through the efforts of the manifesto club and their FOI requests that we can get the full picture, and it is not pretty. PSPOs put the power to criminalise behaviours in the hands of a single council officer.
Shame.
I think you would be hard-pressed to find one constituent who thinks that the ability to make an activity a crime without any statutory necessity for public consultation is something that they want a single council officer to have. And this is not hypothetical. A manifesto club report found that half of councils passed a PSPO through a single council officer. To quote the report, "Never has the creation of crimes been attended to with so few procedural requirements." So my question to the entire council really is, are you pleased to be one of the councils at the forefront of wielding these heavy-handed, ill-conceived instruments against your own citizens, a year after celebrating 800 anniversary of Maggie Carter? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Penny. Again, thank you very much for the passionate speech. And the two PSPOs that we already have in the city have been about preventing antisocial behaviour. And there haven't been any attempts to criminalise anyone. But that is not what we are about. We have a policy that we follow when it is dealing with antisocial behaviour. And it's not just going to be down to one officer making the decision. No, decisions will be taken collaboratively and in the full knowledge that the procedure that has to proceed that is followed correctly. As far as PSPOs in other areas, I would agree there are some poor examples of it being used inappropriately and not consulting thoroughly. I have to say, the city centre PSPO became a national consultation, and we got lots of responses. And I can understand, and I respect anyone's view that is against the legislation to say. But we are where we are with, so what we're doing is actually working with the legislation that we have. But please rest assured, it won't be without full and thorough consultation.
Why don't we believe you?
Hello, my name is Ruth Anderson, and I'm a residential project engineer at Oxford. We were asked to shorten our questions. The draft proposed Waterways PSPO has specifically stated that no person shall tamper with waterways habitats, signage, light belts, fencing, or other waterways infrastructure. Last week, or was it earlier this week? It was last week. The Canals and River Trust run a campaign that included graffiti and the pavement to ask us to be more polite to each other. As this seems to be in direct contradiction of the proposed Waterways PSPO, have the council actually consulted with CART regarding this? And do they think that this was really maybe something that the CART's idea should have actually been thought about beforehand?
In the written response, we have said that the Canals and River Trust are currently the draft PSPO, and it is drawn and are the provisions. So it's not given the provisions if the PSPO were pursued would be in there. So it is all up to debate and consultation now. As far as what the Canals and River Trust has actually done, I'm not entirely sure what matters about. Is it about the quiet zone?
Yes. And where they sprayed the tags on the waterway, all the pavement and things. Well, from my point of view, it doesn't sound like it, but that's what we did. That's what we did in the city.